Anthony Carlicio, owner of Sixteen and Eight- or Eighteen and Twenty East Main Street, tax ID 080.47-1-15. African seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for the change of use of the first floor from a mercantile occupancy classification to an assembly occupancy classification pursuant to the village code of Code 175-22B and 175-40B. African also seeks a variance for relief of parking spaces where the number of parking spaces required, one for each 60 square feet of gross floor area, roughly, we're estimating 54 spaces required pursuant to the village code 175-53B, property zoned, central business.
Hi, I'm Brian Culpa, architect with Waves Architecture and Engineering here representing the owner of the company. So, as you can see in your packets, there's really not a substantial change. There's no change to the site being proposed, change to exterior of the building, changes happening on the interior of the building. As you stated, we're, it's moving from mercantile to a restaurant use. The village code is written around seated restaurant. It's pizzeria. And if you look at drawing A101, which I believe is provided in your packet, you can see, hopefully you see a colored version of A101, otherwise we'll be looking at shit and gray. The light blue is really the only area of the restaurant designated for seating, the majority of the building's kitchen. Yes, you know, there's staff that is accounted for in our request letter. The reality of pizzeria is it requires short-term parking, five, 10-minute parking. We're asking for that variance to be granted based on the public parking on street, the short duration of which most people visiting the establishment would be there.
Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any questions?
Uh, number of employees?
So, that's stated in the letter, I believe it's detailed in paragraph, it looks like third paragraph on page two of five. And so basically, what we're looking at here is, let me get it correct. So, I thought we had it listed there. I apologize, give me one more of those. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, if you look at the fourth paragraph on that page, so basically, the building is currently in the rear with 11 vehicles. We feel that the parking load here will be primarily employee parking, though admittedly, I don't see us, I don't see a listed number, so I apologize.
Just curious.
Yes.
I'm gonna imagine the weekends will be heavier with employees than the weekdays?
Yeah, I mean, it's Friday night and Saturday night, right? Those are really the two evenings where you have the biggest load, aside from, you know, the off-chance that there is a, you know, that time of Sunday, you know, Sunday football, that type of thing.
Yeah. Here in line license?
Yes.
Now, in looking through the information you've provided, am I right to understand that perhaps you're just, you're using the street level and the lower level? The apartments above, were they?
They're remaining apartments.
Under?
Yeah.
Was the building purchased and the apartments went with it?
Yes, so, so the apartments remain, the lower level's really storage, it's not an occupied space for the primary, you know, use of the space. The apartments are remaining, they, and they have a two-space per parking load associated with them.
Okay, thank you.
Where do they currently park?
The apartments.
Yeah. Do they designate parking that they use all the time, or?
Yeah, they're also, it's in the back, it's a portion of that. So, it's three residential units, two parking per, which is a six total parking space. So, we're looking at basically a load of 16 for the restaurant, plus those six to get to the 22. Anything else?
Now, my major curiosity is, how are you going to convert this from mercantile into a pizzeria? And the reason I ask this question is because I am doing a build-out right now with my company to put a Papa John's pizzeria in in Greece, and it is a nightmare.
Well, you know-
And we are, we have access to the roof, we have access to the walls, and we can't figure out how to get their equipment in this building.
So, so, right now, we have obviously a walking cooler and a storage space that have, you know, are on the back of the building. We're basically looking at those double doors and then the new double doors at the front of the building as, you know, being able to accommodate this during construction. But I thought you were gonna ask me the fire partition components of this, and I was gonna say nothing, I never said it was gonna be fun. I just, but-
You're obviously gonna have a pizza oven in here.
Yes.
You're gonna have a cat-the-veer hood of some nature that has to vent to the outside.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a kitchen hood, actually, three hoods that have to come in. Those assemblies, you know, are, those aren't so bad. The pizza oven's the tough part, and it may require a larger, you know, wall cut than we currently show. But the owners worked with is pizza equipment provider, so they have seen the building. I don't know what Papa John's is using, if they're using conveyor system. Yeah, so this is a straight oven, so they come in modules that can be stacked, so there's no conveyor equipment necessarily that's gonna come into place, right, which is a little bit larger unit, but it's, it's not gonna be, it's a challenge, right? Anytime you're retrofitting one of these older buildings, it's a challenge.
Right, well, I mean, you just, there is apartment living up above.
Mm-hmm.
So, you technically are gonna have very difficult access to the roof, so you probably can't vent through the apartments. That means you gotta get to the outside walls. Either you go left, right, or rear.
So, we're on the, we're on the, on, if you're facing it from Main Street, we're on the left side with one hood, and then we're on a new interior partition with the other hoods. And we do have the ability to create a chase vertically at that location, so we can get to that, we can get to the roof through the apartments just with a vertical shaft. Again, if it weren't a challenge, then we wouldn't be working-
It wouldn't be any fun if it wasn't a challenge.
Exactly.
Does the chase already exist?
No, it's, there's, there's gonna be, we're probably gonna end up reworking the chase, and we gotta have a fire, you know-
Oh, it's gotta be a rated, it's gonna have to be a rated chase.
Absolutely.
Welded steel don't work. Did, yeah, did you, you, has Chris, our building inspector, gone over things with you?
Yeah, they, we've, we've submitted, we've submitted our stamp drawings, our fire safety plan to them. You know, they have certainly gone back and forth. The biggest issue's obviously the fire separation of the stairwells, existing stairwells, so there's some work to do there. And then the rated ceiling, obviously, the kitchen separate. But then we also have to, we also have to do a sound separation, which this building didn't have, so between the acoustics and the fire rating, we've got a little, little work ahead of us.
Yeah.
If you want nice things, you have to-
Have you been doing, I've noticed trucks, like painting trucks and things, in and out of there, have you been doing some work inside?
I obviously can't speak to what progress has been made against it at the moment. I'm one of the two partners, Jason Havens, who's, I do the code review and analysis on this along with my team, but Jason's been doing the site work, and he is the, he's sort of the overall project manager in terms of construction, so.
Okay. I know what's in here somewhere, but what's your optimistic time of opening?
Everybody mods everything right away, so.
Yesterday.
If we, yeah, I suppose if the variance is acceptable to this board, then, you know, we'd be looking forward, trying to get this done relatively in short order, but there's decent amount of work to do, and obviously, a lot hinges upon, you know, being able to continue to take this step, so, you know, let's see. I'm always a little hesitant to actually give schedules out when we're being recorded.
Understood. Are you proposing any facade changes in the future?
I mean, right now, yeah, there'll, there'll be, you know, signage, obviously, and that type of stuff will be submitted, but the moment we're trying to get through, we're trying to get through the conversion until, until we know we can move forward with the mercantile to A2, which kind of comes back to this parking issue, so.
Yes.
And again, it's, it's just an anomaly, right? So, if this were a sit-down restaurant, and you would expect customers becoming in, you know, seated for an hour or so, or two hours, I would say, I understand the village code, but in this case, you know, it's, it's, it's something like fair, there will be some people who choose to sit, maybe that's about your lunch crowd, or maybe it's an evening crowd, but the reality is, you know, the majority of it's ordered takeout.
Do you have any employees, you'll be delivering, I would assume?
Yeah, operationally, I think the plan is to have some delivery, although I don't know, you know, with the prevalence of Uber Eats and DoorDash and all of those things, how many dedicated employees there are to delivery.
You're not gonna have like a truck, a, that'll do deliveries, or a car that-
There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any commercial vehicles specific to delivery, but, you know, there's probably an employee with a car at times, yeah.
I always think a pizza place needs delivery.
Yeah. Well, again, that's, that's one of those, you know, you order, I think there's five apps now on my phone for Slice, DoorDash, you know. Uber Eats keeps sending me, you know, things telling me I have certificates available, but, so, you know, I think that's part of the culture that we're in right now, is that, you know, a lot of people are doing takeout via app, and, but then again, that's sort of the kind of power for the course with, when you're trying to retrofit one of these small village properties with, you know, zero lot line, you know, construction set inside of something, you're gonna deal with some anomalies like the fact that your parking is limited to where it is, and, so, I think it'll be a good use ultimately, it should lie in the corner of-
You mentioned, someone asked if you have a liquor license.
The plan, I would think long-term, right now, we don't have anything, because we'd have to submit final plans and drawings in order to, in order to do that, so, you know-
So, that must mean some sort of dining, seating, and fire?
There is some dining and seating, but, you know, right now, it's, again, it's limited to that-
Right. Does it spawn-
550 square foot and 148 square foot space, so, you know, you always hold out some of those items for later on.
You do have another site, correct?
Yes.
He does, the owner does have another site, yes.
On F5.
On F5, I thought it was, okay. It, it's not strictly pizza, right? It's the usual pizza wings, subs, potentially, or?
Yeah, that's, that's in the owner's mouth, so.
Okay.
He will offer some variation.
Any more questions from the board? All right, I'll open it to the public. If anybody wants to speak, please go up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My biggest question is the parking, and the, the parking, we kind of downgraded the delivery system, saying it's gonna be DoorDash or somebody else, but there's still vehicles on Main Street, and very close to the four corners. And when I see the traffic there on a Friday night, or other times, I think we're gonna be shutting down Laton Park, because nobody will be able to get out. I can see a problem here with double parking, with people coming to pick up. There is, I have one question, direct question, and that is, is there gonna be a rear entrance? So, we can take advantage of the parking that is in the rear?
I can, I'll answer all that on the record after, if that makes sense.
Okay. That's my biggest problem, I can see, because it's so close to the four corners, there's many times in the, and on a busy Friday night, or Saturday night, it's very hard to get out of Laton Park with the traffic backed up from the four corners. And with people trying to parallel park, to run in for five minutes, you're gonna see them double park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to wait till there's any other comments?
Anybody else from the public? Okay, not seeing anybody?
Okay, so I'm gonna take those in reverse order. The first answer is no, there is not a back entrance. That doesn't mean that vehicles can't park there, it's, it's simply a matter of how a kitchen gets laid out. So, the back of the building is a walking cooler, storage and dishwashing, and an employee, an employee restroom. In order to do, have, so there's, there's stairs throughout this building, there's two sets of stairs in the front that lead to the apartments, there's a second set of stairs that's set along the right wall. So, the way that this thing lays out basically is we're not receiving food service delivery to come to the back, but the counter and the restaurant faces forward towards Main Street, intentionally. We'd like to see people walk in the front, use the front entrance. That has as much to do with security concerns as anything else, but it's not atypical for pizzerias to be located in tight village spaces. I could point to any number of villages throughout the Rochester, greater Rochester, greater Buffalo area, and show you where, where pizzerias are operational like this, and vehicles are not double parked on their main street. You know, the reality is, yes, there's some vehicle volume, but, you know, at the end of the day, there is, there is parking, there is on-street parking, and, you know, it's an opportunity to, to fill, right now, an empty commercial space with an active commercial activity, and I can see pizza being very popular, and people using the park. So, you know, with all due respect to the gentleman who spoke, you know, I guess I don't think that, I suppose the owner would love for the turnaround to be so bad that it was creating double parking issues, but I don't, we don't anticipate that to actually be the case.
Thank you.
Is, is the back door on the ground level open to the restaurant, so you can get into the back door and go up the stairs, right? Because it seems like the staircase opens directly into the dining area.
So, if you look at the back stairs, you can utilize that, that to get to the dining space, but, you know, again, it's not the sort of primary in and out, right, it's not the service counter. Are you, so are you asking, can you get through there?
Yes.
Yes, it's not accessible, though, it's not an accessible route, and you can't go, get through there, it's just stairs. It serves as our second fire egress as well.
Okay, but if I park down below behind the buildings, I can get to the pizzeria from the ground level, behind the building?
As opposed to having that be exit only?
Yes.
Yeah, I suppose you can get in that way, but again, I can't-
Is the intent that that door is open?
No.
It has to be open, right?
It has to be, well, it's an exit, right? So, it has to be available for exiting. Whether the owner leaves it open or not, I don't, I can't tell you that that should be a primary entrance. The entrance is an accessible entrance at the front of the building. If the board said you need to leave that exit door open, that's something I can take to the order. It's just, right now, it's intended to be, it's not intended to be a primary entrance.
Doesn't that sort of create a second layer of questions about where the parking actually is then? Because if you need 22 spots, you can't actually get to the pizzeria, and the public isn't going to easily be able to get to the pizzeria from the rear, where are those 22 spots?
Correct. Well, if you don't use the ground floor of the back door, then you have zero spots dedicated to the business. You have street parking?
Because people aren't gonna walk around the building.
Right.
Okay. So, if the door has to be made open, that's fine, but I'm not, we're not able to turn that into an accessible entrance. So, as long as we're clear that, you know, not, if, the idea is, we have-
When you say accessible, are you referring to ADA?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, obviously, you got a staircase there, you can't do any more much about that.
Sure, but if it's demarcated as the entrance of the building, then I've got another issue altogether, which is accessible parking near an entrance.
Right.
So, but if the board says that there's stipulation that that entrance door has to be maintained as an entrance door, that's okay, as long as I can acknowledge it won't be an accessible entrance.
There is a-
There's no way to ramp it, and we're not providing an elevator.
There's an alleyway here between the buildings for the back parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's not inconceivable that something-
That alleyway is not walkable during the winter.
Well, we agree.
So, the village is a walkable center, right? There's parking provided, again, we're, we're providing parking for, for customers, we're expecting that employees will park behind, so that their employees aren't tying up Main Street spaces. The idea here is that, yes, customers can park back there. We, the preference would be to have customers come into the front of the building, we have maintained this as an exit, and we are utilizing that as, as a secondary exit because there's a stair.
Basically, it's an emergency exit.
Essentially, yes.
Essentially.
But, again, this is, this is one of those challenges as to how people are actually gonna utilize the building. I, I don't think it's unheard of in this village for people to walk the distance it would take to either utilize the alley or walk around the corner of the space.
This will be tough.
Okay, so, I would, the devil's advocate, he would say, when it was functioning mercantile, were people using the back entrance more than the front entrance?
I would say yes.
Okay. So, that what the village would really want, to backload all of the foot traffic?
Well, no, I think you would have a better chance for your request based on the fact of there is a secondary way to-
So, we would leave that door-
I would say it's your main entrance.
I, so we would, we would leave the door unlocked, I'm sure that, leave the door unlocked and operable as an entrance, but I just don't want it to be conceived of as a primary. Because when we do signage and stuff, we're gonna be asked about primary entrance space.
Right.
Which is clearly gotta be off of Main Street. So, okay.
Well, I don't think the intention would be to make it the primary entrance.
No.
None of the other businesses along that part of Main Street, yeah, they have rear entrances, but those aren't the primary entrances.
Well, look at Jojo's. Jojo's has a rear entrance, and you walk up the stairs, and you're just, easier way, but it's not the, it's not the primary entrance. And when this was the music store, and my kids took piano lessons, they would, we would go in the back, but half the time, you know, they would go out the front, and I would pick them up off of Main Street, so.
I, I don't think that anybody has an issue then allowing that door to be open, and we anticipate people will be exiting that way, there is a vest to be able, so that's fine.
But why can't people go in that way?
I'm saying, no, that's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that. If that, I mean, that, that's absolutely okay.
It's just not an ADA entrance.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, if, yeah, it wouldn't be an ADA entrance, they'd still have to use it front, that would be the primary-
That would be the primary ADA accessible entrance.
But having that-
So, you're, you're, you're-
Gives access to-
You're providing an ADA entrance.
We have a full ADA accessible entrance at the front of the building as a primary entrance, and we now have a secondary means of accessing the space through a vest to be able to manage it.
What if the secondary means a big restaurant?
So, the, the dining room is, as is constructed, is small enough to be able to utilize that front entrance. It's got the right fire separation, and we meet code. The secondary entrance can be inside of that stair space, but we're not, we don't need to provide a secondary ADA entrance. You don't always have to, you don't, so if you look at Interstate Building Code, right, we're, we're under a certain square footage, we're in existing building, in existing building code, so we are able to use the stairs as a secondary mean of, means of egress, with the idea that the travel distance to the front door, and the fire separations where we have them create an opportunity for people to exit safely if they're in wheelchair, or to utilize the sort of back end of the space as secondary resource. Like I said, the, the reality here is we're trying to infill a very small space on a Main Street in a tight location with a use that is not expected to consume all of our E volume of a traditional restaurant.
I'm good. You're good?
I just wish we could do one more of the ECS, turn in the back, change the lights.
So, the next step would be to do our subject determination. This would be a Type 2 pursuant to secur.
Because nothing's been done to the exterior.
Correct. Nothing's been done to the exterior at this time, so. So, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that this is a Type 2 pursuant to secur.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Dave seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, so, now, we need to determine, they have two area, or variance requests, which the first one, and we'll do these separately, is a change of use. It's going from a requesting, from a mercantile to an assembly occupancy.
I'll make a motion to, for the change of use from mercantile to-
So, Kathy has provided a motion- So Kathy has provided a motion to approve the change in use from a mercantile to an assembly. Do I have a second?
I'll second there.
Peter has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Our second variance is a parking variance, and I believe it's for 54 spaces. Code requires, code requires one space for 60 square feet, and using the first floor of 3,200 and,
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Literally, that's correct. However, one could question, what does it mean by gross floor area? The gross floor area that the public's gonna be using? You know, because that's where all the parking's coming from.
I think we're gonna have to review the parking requirements for,
So, you know, I sympathize a little with the applicant saying that, you know, this isn't your typical sit-down restaurant where the majority of the square footage is for the restaurant, you know, for the public.
I agree, because based on my calculation, I roughly calculated 960 square feet is the public space, so if you do,
More or less.
One space per 60 square feet, that's 16 spaces.
Right.
And personally, I'd like to know how many employees were gonna be there, because then we can determine that you already have 11 spaces, and then how many spaces are left over, you know, for 16. So, I mean, the weekend, or the weekdays probably maybe four or five, and weekends are 10. I, it would be helpful to have some of that information.
So again, if, and I apologize, I'm not, I don't know if I'm able to speak. Okay, so if you look at the page two of five, the second full paragraph towards the end of it, Jason's calculations, accounting for the inclusion of staff parking, there would be an additional maximum parking load of four spaces yielding a peak volume of 16 spaces. So it's basically, he's looking at the 700 square feet divided by 60 per spot, yielding a requirement of 12. You know, again, this is, that was his takeoff. Whether that's correct, you know, I guess it depends on how many employees you have on site at any one time. That accounts, although that doesn't account for the fact that pizzeria staff tends to be young, and some of that could be drop-off or bike or pedestrian activity as well.
Question about the parking lot, is there a reason the other side of the parking lot in back isn't striped?
So I think that if that were to be striped, you'd actually see a parking, it would end up being the limiting factor in terms of how people currently park. If you, if you watch that site during the day, and then during the evening, sometimes striping gains spaces, sometimes you don't.
The problem, the issue with that particular, this particular parcel, it was part, right, it was part of when, you know, the Jojo's and the buildings in the back were all developed, the village has, it actually got dedicated to the village. Although it's an unnamed road, but the village actually owns sort of a thoroughfare that goes through the middle of that parking lot. That's why it was never striped. You know, because if you, if you look at this, this photo, you know, like the Village Bakery is right where these trees are. And it's sort of, the jag kind of through there, so, you know, there are spaces, they could stripe it up closer to the building.
I'm trying to remember when it was the music store, I thought it was striped there.
You know, it might have been, and then they sealed it at some point, but, you know, I don't know. I can't remember that.
Is that one of the,
You know, I think there isn't a time during the day when the back lots collectively on that side of downtown are full. Well, because Village Bakery is open, they're all pretty much full, usually.
Well, and they would can, you know, Village Bakery closes at 3:00, and then they probably open at 3:00, so it would be offsetting.
Right, and considering the other parking, for the other businesses that shut down at 5:00, I'm thinking the pizzeria, your business is more evening-oriented, for the most part. That between the other business parking, assuming you're gonna be good neighbors with them, and everybody kobeas and says, hey, do you mind if I use your lot in the evenings? You know, behind that life on the corner.
I believe there's a past practice establishment here, which would make it very hard to,
Well, there's actually, there's actually, there's actually an agreement,
Yeah.
with all of the property owners, except for the former Smith Insurance Agency.
That's what I was gonna ask.
They refuse to join in with everybody, so they control their, the parking behind that building, although the Smiths don't own that property anymore, whoever owns it, World Insurance Life, whoever that is.
Okay.
But everybody, everyone else agree that it's open to the public.
It's maintained by the village, is that correctly?
What?
Is that parking lot also one maintained by the village as the joint, as some other parking lots are behind businesses on West Main?
You know, if Jake were here, he could answer that. You know, off the top of that, agreement was done a while ago.
Yeah.
And I can't remember exactly if the village just plows, you know, the kind of the thoroughfare, and then the businesses have to plow the parking, or if the village does the whole thing, I'm not exactly sure.
I don't know either, I know on West Main, many of the parking lots are maintained by the village.
The village plows the entire parking lots, you know, like they do for the museum as public parking too, and the village plows that. The village doesn't own that building. But anyhow, you know, I,
So as I,
So, but I, so I don't know how many, you know, of the variance, the 54 spaces, you know,
So does it need a variance of 43?
Some of them can be used, you know, I don't, since it's not striped, it's hard to count spaces, but there is a parking within the parcel that the applicant owns.
Right, so that's why I'm wondering, is it a variance of 43 spaces? Because we're including the whole upper floor as the, counting the number of spaces required, which would technically include the public and staff, so if it's, if we determined 54 was required, but they have 11, so that would be 43.
It doesn't matter, because it, 43, 54, you know, there's gonna be on-street parking, and,
But it seems to make it less of a,
Yeah.
variance, but. See, I thought that could be restriked again, to have parking on the other side. You could probably pick up another 11, 10, or 11. No, no, I thought there is a guide rail right there, you can't get through.
Look at that there.
It's always been there, as far as I've looked here.
Wait, have you driven through here?
I've never driven through there.
Is that a car?
No, there's a, there's a,
There's something there.
No, no, there's not a guardrail there, there's a guardrail. Here's,
Oh, right.
Smith's guardrail.
Smith, you know what, it's curved.
Smith has the, Yes, you're right. Smith's, but this is curved, from the Village Bakery portion.
Right.
And then there's a swath of probably unmoored grass or whatever. There is a divide.
So aside from being an architect, I practice in urban planning, and we get into this with a lot of villages whose code, you know, ends up putting businesses in front of boards like yours, and some of those villages have moved to zero parking requirements for commercial, or 1.5 parking per thousand feet of commercial, just generically mixed-use commercial space, with the idea that there's basically a quarter-mile stretch of Main Street on both sides of the street, plus municipal parking within walking distance. And when you want a walkable hamlet or a walkable village center, you've gotta be able to fill it with businesses. Traditionally, we would build buildings stacked next to one another with limited parking behind. It seems to be that when you want to promote that type of activity, you want that type of lively Main Street and pedestrian-centric Main Street, you've gotta account for the fact that codes are written generically around business typologies that really don't, aren't out there anymore. So, you know, I try to encourage people, go to zero parking, see what happens to your village center. Anecdotally,
Essentially, the way this code is written, it does say zero parking, because it says up to 100% of the parking space is required,
Right.
may be otherwise located upon a finding that off-site parking is within 500 feet of the site, and within the same or less restricted district. That takes into account the public parking areas, both on the street, in the back, over by the museum, you know. So that's why I kind of agree that whether it's 43 or 54, it might be immaterial.
And historically, we've never denied variance for parking on Main Street, because we want to cause usage of nature.
Now, the only, you didn't make it a condition of the change of use, but what about the rear entrance? Not just a, you know, you could make it a condition of the parking variance, I suppose, or you can go back and amend your previous one. You need to have that condition somewhere.
Oh, on the rear?
Yeah, that, 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 they're gonna modify their plans to have the, where the stairway is, that that would be a secondary ingress and egress.
You think that might just come into a code requirement ultimately?
I don't know, I'm not a building inspector, I don't, I'm not, that's more your failing with the mine. I'm just saying, if you make it a condition, we don't have to worry about whether it's in a building code.
Well, then they got to answer the question. If it's a condition of variance, then it specifically must be answered.
Right.
If we don't mention it, then it's just,
Right, that's why I just assume make it a condition of either the change of use or the parking, one of them.
And your regional,
It came up, it's to address parking, so you just incorporate it into,
True, I'm just wondering if we wanna change, amend the change of use, because if this changes the use in the future, it would be more time to use.
Go with the preliminary,
That's true.
approval tonight, and final site would have,
You wanna split it?
I don't know that you can split it, because the change of use is gonna require parking, right?
Yeah, we're not doing, we're not requiring,
No, it doesn't need site cleaning.
Right.
So just approval for a change of use.
I think it would be cleaner if we amend the change of use. So it's up to you, if you are comfortable with, setting the condition that the rear entrance needs to be open to allow the public to access both the rear and the front of the building with the change of use from mercantile to assembly.
Okay, so we're gonna cancel out the first motion now. So part of the approval of the change from mercantile to assembly will be a rear entrance plan egress in the back of the building.
To allow, yeah, to allow the public to,
Yes.
enter and access.
From the back parking lot versus the front entrance.
Okay, I have amended.
I'll second there.
Peter has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? All right, so now with that being straight, we are back to variance for the parking. And so,
For a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant a positive recommendation to grant the variance for 54 spaces for 18 West East Main Street.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We'll be sure to invite you when we get pizza.